Good evening. My name is Stephanie Fawnan and I've had the privilege of covering the Barnegat Township School District for the last three years as a news reporter. I am also a Barnegat resident and taxpayer and therefore also have a vested interest in the success of our schools. I'd like everybody to stand so we can say the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I am pleased once again to host this candidate's forum to allow voters to make educated decisions concerning their ballot choices. Our forum this year has been expanded to include a civic lesson for select Barnegat High School students who have agreed to participate in this weekend's, this evening's, not weekend, presentation. I thank both Barnegat High School teacher Erin Kuivitz and her AP Government and Civics students for their participation. I would also like to express my gratitude to Dr. Brian Latwis for allowing us to use the high school to host this important forum. The logistics in putting this forum together also involve collaboration from several school district staff members. You have all added in making this event run smoothly. I appreciate your dedication. You'll notice that I used the word forum a couple of times and not debate. Board of Education elections are nonpartisan. In case you aren't aware, board members put in extraordinary time for zero compensation. If I were to ask any of the candidates up here why they feel the need to run for the board, I would likely learn that they all want what's best for our school district. With all of that in mind, who better to ask to help? I am now asking Phil Lo Piccolo, who, hopefully I said his name right, who is a senior in Mrs. Kuivitz's AP Government class, to share information with you concerning the balance of this evening's format. Before Phil gets up, I just have one thing to add. I was expecting another candidate this evening and just got notice that he will not be coming. Mr. Christopher Raldos will not be here this evening. He had a family thing that he could not make it. Thank you so much and I'm turning it over to one of our students. Thank you.
As you will note, there are nine candidates seated on the stage for this presentation. Tina Rose Yuli's name still appears on the ballot. However, she has advised us that she no longer wishes to pursue one of the three open positions. Justin Deemer, who currently sits on the Board of Education, is out of town on business. Although he will be unable to participate in the forum, you can find his statement in Tap into Barnegat Weretown Digital's newspaper. The candidates have already been assigned random time slots to deliver both opening and closing statements. They all recognize that they are neighbors in the same community and I am confident that they will all act with dignity. I know things can get a bit long-winded on particular subjects. Hopefully, we will be giving, or, I'm sorry, we will be giving time signals to alert speakers when they have reached their limits. Hopefully, we won't have to make any calls to have mics shut off. We will also be monitoring an email inbox for questions that may arise as a result to answers you hear during the forum. Please feel free to email at barnegatboeforum2021@gmail.com. That's one word and all lowercase letters. The questions posed this evening come from a variety of sources. Some are from community members while others stem from issues identified during the year or from statements provided by candidates. Students have also developed their own set of questions. Candidates have the opportunity to raise their hands to respond to general inquiries. Some questions are directed at individuals. Others may raise their hand to comment on questions directed at someone else. I would also like to take a moment to recognize a few of my fellow students here who will be helping ask questions, keep time, and also be taking down a few statements for the newspaper. I'd like to first recognize Anthony Idon. Anthony Idon is a member of the civics, civics course class. There you go. Thanks, Mrs. Kuivitz. And then I'd also like to recognize both Janet Rogers and Adriana Katmeyer, who are a member of the AP Government and Politics class. And then myself, I am Philip Lo Piccolo and I'm a member of both classes. I know, I'm fancy. I'd now like to call up Janet Rogers, who will be asking our first question of the evening.
Do you have an opening statement?
Oh, wait. My mistake. No. Back to the opening statement. It's my mistake.
Clearly, I should have written the whole agenda for myself. The first thing we're going to do is each of the candidates has picked positions for both opening and closing statements. They only have 60 seconds to give opening statements. We gave them, we gave them Nandi at the end of the forum to give closing statements. Who is our first? We're going to start first with Ms. Levy.
Good evening, Barnegat. Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you, Mrs. Kuivitz, and the students who participate tonight. Thanks to Barnegat School District. Let me explain why I decided to run for the Board of Education. I've practically spent my entire life in the field of education. I'm a graduate of Douglas, I was a BA in math, and a K-12 teacher of mathematics certificate. I also received my master's of, in education, from the City University in Jersey City, as well as a principal and supervisor certificate. I became a seventh and eighth grade math teacher, of math and algebra. I transitioned to Carney's Master Math Teacher. I then spent the last years of my career as Director of Pre-K to 8 Curriculum. My husband and I moved to Barnegat 17 years ago. I currently serve as Treasurer of the Mirage Women's Club, as well as a member of our Finance Committee. If given the opportunity to become a member of the Board of Education, I will work diligently towards the improvement of student achievement by measure of state tests with the ultimate goal of all of our students meeting or exceeding state standards.
Excuse me. I'm sorry to cut you off, Mrs. Levy.
I'm done.
Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Murn, please.
Good evening and thank you for coming and thank you for the candidates. It's a time in our history, in our state, in our town, when it's nice to see people volunteer for jobs. My name is John Murn. I'm a 9F on your ballot. I'm a former teacher and principal for 39 years. I was also a former mayor in North Jersey, I think, for 16 years. I believe that those positions, I've done many budgets, both school and municipal. I live in town, I pay taxes, I want the best bang for my buck. I'm really concerned about the graduation rate. Our graduation rate here is approximately 92%. That means eight students out of every 100 do not graduate in their senior year. If you have 300 students, that's 24 students that do not graduate. That should be improved. We can do that. And also Channel 22 Public Access. We have to get out there and let people know what the school is doing. It's a great school district. We have to let people know it's not just budgets. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murn. Mr. Gibson.
Hello.
Hello. Hello, my name's Andrew Gibson. I live in Barnegat. I've got two kids. I'm going to be the pro-medical freedom candidate up here. I think that parents should have a choice whether to mask or vaccinate their children. And I will be the only voice on the board to stand up for that, for medical freedoms of all students. Currently, our board is unwilling to stand up against Governor Murphy. They've said that they have conflicts of interest when dealing with their careers, that they will not vote against executive orders that are passed down here, even though they believe, their beliefs are against the executive orders. They've said that they are limited by professional consequences. I do not possess those conflicts of interest. And those of parents here who are, and who vote, who are comfortable masking currently, I am an investment for when vaccination mandates come here. I will be a hell no on vaccinations.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Mr. Fedorsik.
I'll go. It's fine. Does anybody else have three? All right. Thank you, Stephanie, Ms. Kuivitz, and your students. I think it's phenomenal that you're all out here tonight. I've been up here, this is my third time up here, and I'm glad to have your presence and your interaction. Four to six years old, grew up down here in Barnegat, born and raised, married to my wife Renee. I've got two daughters in the school district, 8th grade and kindergarten. I am involved in community, you know, not just currently, I am a member of the school board. I was appointed back in November to fill a vacancy for a former board member who had to leave for personal reasons. Community involvement, I am involved with the Rotary, Barnegat Rotary Club, a member of the American Legion here, I'm a life member of the VFW over in Barnegat Light. And as I said, I'm a current board member. We're short on time, so I look forward to the rest of this evening and being able to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you for going and it was supposed to be Ms. Tarnaski. Can you please?
I'm four.
Yeah, but...
Oh, okay. All right, fine. I'll switch spots with you. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having us here. Thank you to the students for being here. We appreciate you more than anything. My name is Regina Tarnowski. I am a single mom of four kids, three of them in district at different elementary schools. I'm a soccer coach, a Girl Scout leader. My son is in Boy Scouts. I'm a member of the VFW Post 9503 Auxiliary where I am the Youth Services Chair. I'm a full-time student and I'm venturing into a handmade online clothing shop. My reason for being here is strictly parent involvement in the district is so important. I'm here to be an advocate for your children, for my children, for any child in the district. I don't believe that politics has any place on the board. I don't believe that pettiness has any place on the board. I believe that we are all independent thinkers. We all have reasons for being here and I appreciate each one of you for being here tonight. Thank you so much.
And Mr. Sarno.
Number seven.
The numbers are changed because I had nine numbers in there, so I apologize. That's what happened. I didn't take the nines out.
Okay.
So everybody was moved up and my wonderful associates were smart enough to cross off things so that I would realize that.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I'd like to first thank the, you, the public for coming out tonight, those viewing online, Stephanie from Tap into Barnegat, Ms. Kuivitz, the BEA, the AP US Government Class, for sponsoring tonight's candidates night. My name is Scott Sarno. I'm extremely excited to be running for a position on the Board of Education. I'm a parent of five children. I have two that have graduated from Barnegat High School, two that are currently in Barnegat High School, and one that is in Brockman. I have been a lifelong resident of Nation County and I have been a Barnegat resident for 22 years. Being a effective board member requires being able to collaborate and creative thinking to ensure resources are invested into our classroom. Our tax dollars are used effectively and efficiently for the best education possible for our students. I believe my diverse background sets me apart from other candidates. I hold the New Jersey K-35 Teaching Certification and spent six years teaching in a local program. I owned a local successful business in Barnegat for over eight years. I also have 12 years' experience working in the financial management and budget oversight. In order to be a successful board member, we must focus on giving our children the highest quality education that provides them with the tools they need to maximize their future success. Thank you.
Ms. Washburn. Ms. Washburn.
I'd like to start off by saying thank you for everyone attending, everyone watching online, Stephanie, Ms. Kuivitz, everyone here. My name is Lauren Washburn. I'm running for the Board of Education solely to make a difference. I do not have huge political aspirations, but I do have 12 years' experience in education, a bachelor's degree from Montclair State University, and a three-year-old daughter in the Barnegat school system. I've been married for nearly 10 years to my husband Drew. I've worked with a very diverse group of students throughout the years and have a passion for helping students reach their goals. I hope to bring this experience to the Barnegat Board of Education. We have wonderful things happening in our district, including our Upstander Awards, our incredible teachers, and our very involved PTA. However, our test scores are not where they should be and I'd like to see that improved. That will be a long-term goal of mine. We need to make sure our spending is being done in the right places. We need to evaluate our budgets and make changes where they need to be made. Let's make what we have designated for us work without further taxing a township, and it's townspeople that are already heavily taxed. Lastly, I find it important to mention that I am personally invested in making sure this district is one that supports the educational journeys of our students and provides for the best outcomes possible. Our children deserve the best and I won't accept anything less.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Washburn. Mr. Iamonte.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, hearing the audience and watching on YouTube. My name is Bruno Iamonte and I'm a candidate for one of the positions, and I'm a candidate for one of the positions on the Board of Education. I am a retired science teacher. I taught for 36 years in the Carney School District. And as an educator, I developed a, an environment, a summer environmental program for which I had received awards for and also grants to run the program. Upon retiring, I moved to Barnegat 16 years ago. And also, since I moved in here in Barnegat, I volunteer with the First Day Squad, for which I'm still a member, as a CPR instructor and community outreach person. Also, I serve on the Community Advising Committee that was just established in the school district. And that really opened my eyes to some of the issues that the school district faces. And for that, I decided to be a candidate.
I'm sorry to cut you off, but thank you so much, Mr. Iamonte. And I am going to turn this over to our, one of our students who's going to ask the first question.
This question combines a couple of things our classmates asked, as well as from a member of the public. Most of the candidates cite some kind of fiscal responsibility as a priority. How do you feel about the way teachers are treated and paid? What are you going to do to keep teachers from leaving and how will you attract new teachers and replace the ones that are leaving? It appears teachers currently have a $200 annual budget for things related to their classroom. This is to cover everything they may need. I understand that many of the teachers are purchasing things like glue sticks and worksheets out of their own money.
Bonne nuit.
As far as providing teachers the materials they need for the classroom, that has to be a priority of our Board of Education. I'm not sure that we are not giving our teachers the materials that they need, but if it is the case that they get a $200 budget and they have to put out more money than that, I think we have to find a way to help our teachers to get what the children need in the classroom. Classroom is number one to education and we will be all for it.
I'd just like to, I'd just like to add to that. I, I agree. And I don't think a teacher should have to put out money out of their own pocket to purchase material that the board should be responsible for providing it.
When I first posed you a question about being fiscal responsible and keeping, attracting teachers and keeping the good ones, the great ones we have here, again, having a working environment to support, nurture, and elevate our teachers. People want to come to a district where they feel wanted, needed, and appreciated. So that's step number one to attracting and keeping good quality teachers. As far as purchasing the wrong goods and items, in 2021 to 2022 budgets, classroom instruction spending have been cut by 2.5, 4.5%. 2020 to 21, 22, they've cut in-class supplies by 14.2% in their budget. So again, the budget has been cut for in-class support to our teachers, which again, like you're saying, teachers now have to go out and take out of their own pocket to supply our kids. With the taxes we pay in Barnegat and the tax rate we pay, that to me is unacceptable.
Education begins in the classroom. No one should have to take money out of their own pocket to get the basic things that they need to help students learn. That's the purpose of being up here, to create policies that help students learn. Teachers have to have that leeway, a certain amount of money each year that they can spend for their particular classroom. They know their students. Thank you.
I think it's obvious for everyone up here on the stage, the landscape of teaching has changed over the last year, two years, as a result of the pandemic. I think we need to be able to support our teachers in the ever-changing landscape of what their classrooms look like, what their students look like, what kind of challenges they are encountering. I think we need to be able to support them, train them how to deal with the issues that they're getting to, and make sure that they're feeling appreciated as well. I don't believe teachers should be having to spend money out of their own pockets in order to cover classroom supplies and things like that, and that should be something that we're definitely addressing in the future.
So it's an interesting question because I actually saw the $200 stipend pop up on Facebook last night and asked it. Apparently, it's something that, it's more of a case of, well, that's what we've always done. And it's a question that the board themselves really is not going to get 100% involved with because it's going to come up through the administration. And once it comes up and says, hey, here's the budget, this is what we're going to do, the board will be able to, to speak to it. I do not think teachers should have to take anything out of their pocket. It's unacceptable. It's an unacceptable practice that has gone on for a long time. As far as Mr. Sarno's statement of the in-class spending being reduced, when enrollment rises, spending is going to reduce across the board. So the only way to fix that is to increase the budget, which then increases taxes, which can be a problem. But for the $200 spending, I think it's definitely something the board can sit down with Dr. Latwis and discuss.
So I don't think there's a single person up here who's going to sit here and tell you that it's acceptable for a teacher to be paying for anything out of their pocket for any supply or any necessity they need for the classroom. None of us are going to sit here and say, because it's blatantly unacceptable. The teachers, to bring in good teachers, we need to be offering them support. There should be workshops, personal development, there needs to be, you know, opportunities for them that include, you know, reevaluating their pay. And I know that we have a large step process when it comes to that. But in order for us to attract great teachers and keep the great teachers that we currently have, we need to be offering them something more than what we are right now.
Thank you. Oh, yes.
I guess everyone says something. I think we could solve it, that problem, or start working towards that program before we even get to the board. I think we can call on our parents to get involved with their classrooms. Minimally, I know when I sent my son to kindergarten here, we, you know, offered paper towels, we offered popsicle sticks, things like that. I think teachers should know that parents also have their back, not just the elected thing. If teachers could make available lists of things they might need for that, I think our kindergarten teacher did that and she was never short of anything. We can do a lot as parents to support our teachers too. So I think rather, I'm sure we have some power up here where we can do something in the grand scale thing, but teachers should reach out to their parents and parents should be supporting their teachers in helping their students get educated.
Community involvement is, is an answer to that, too. We live in Mirage and it's a senior community. I belong to the Women's Club. I am sure if we could help in any way possible with the school district, we've raised money for all kinds of community issues and community initiatives and would be happy to help the schools.
Thank you. Okay, so here's, I'm going to ad lib a little. This, I don't have it written down, but it occurred to me as I was about to introduce the next question. How many of you have been at a Board of Education meeting in the last year? How many of you had the privilege of watching or participating in the New Jersey School Board Association's recent self-evaluation? Anybody watch that? Okay. It's an important one because it kind of sets forth exactly what the board is allowed to do and there's a lot of misconception about that. So the reason for my next question, it's kind of a trick question, but it incorporates another issue that we hear a lot about. So this representative that spoke before the New Jersey School Board Association reviewed the current board's self-evaluation. They evaluate themselves, how are they working together as a board, do they have any problems, that kind of thing. And in this particular instance, they also discuss ethical obligations. Not everybody knows what the ethics are behind being a board member. So here's, I want you to consider this scenario. We all hear about critical race theory, CRT. Just so you know, I've confirmed this not only with our Board of Education, but with the State of New Jersey Department of Education. It is not part of the New Jersey Student Learning Standards and is not mandated to be taught in any public school in the state of New Jersey. I want to make that clear. However, many families, I got to tell you, if I got questions about anything, that's what I got questions about. Many families are still concerned about this topic. So knowing this, people have access to you as a Board of Education member, you're on the board, I hate this idea, or I think this is a program that needs to be implemented. What are you going to do for me about it? You may have an opinion one way or another. I want to know what you do with that particular question. How do you respond to the parent that's upset one way or another? Mr. Sarno.
I'll gladly go first on this. Again, and I know you kind of went through a myriad of things, of self-evaluation, ethics, and then the critical race theory. If a parent addressed me, and has in the past, addressed me about a specific issue, knowing that I'm serving on the Board of Education, first of all, when you are not in a board meeting, you are not a board member. You have no authority as a board member. You cannot give any opinion as a board member. So you don't give your opinion as a parent. You can tell them what you think parentally, what you would do with your children, how you stand politically, but as a board member, you have no authority. The only time you have authority is when the non-board members are together in a meeting that is announced. At that point, you then can speak as a board member at the dais, at the microphone, to the public when they ask questions. So again, I would state my feeling, my view, what I think is important, but again, whatever the board decides as a whole, that's the direction the district goes in, not the decision Mr. Sarno makes.
Anyone else? Mr. Fedorsik.
Yes. It's a great question, one that we could probably spend hours on. You know, and I do agree with, you know, Mr. Sarno, you can't make a decision until the board stands here as a whole. But the one thing I do disagree with, and it's, it's very, very light, the public still sees me as a board member, whether I'm in my professional capacity or not. So you can have those conversations, but you need to have the wherewithal in the back of your mind that that individual that you're speaking with may not have the same education with, you know, as you do as far as what your responsibilities are. So in their mind, they may be speaking to a board member. First and foremost, you don't make promises for anything. And if that question did come up, if I did have the ability to speak about my own personal opinion, it would probably be as the situation dictates, but more importantly, I would take the information where I would direct them back to whoever the administrator is that's responsible for whatever the problem is that has come across. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Levy.
Yeah, I would mention first to anyone who asked me about that, what they believed critical race theory was, because I think there's a misconception by many, many people what this theory was all about. It began in colleges and universities in the 1970s where people in the college atmosphere decided to explore the impact that race had on laws and culture within the United States. We are not currently teaching, or do we expect to teach, critical race theory in this country, or I should say in this state, as Stephanie has said. And I think perhaps an informational session with parents to discuss what critical race theory is might be beneficial to get this message. theory is might be beneficial to get this message out to all of our parents, that yes, we talk about race, we talk about the country and how race has been affected in this country, but at the same time, we are not going to teach critical race theory.
Thank you, Mrs. Levy. Anyone else? Mrs. Washburn?
I think it's important for the parents of this district to feel heard. Just in the short time that I've been on the ballot, I've had several parents reach out through various messages, different ways of getting in touch, and letting you know that they've had certain ideas and thoughts and things that they felt unheard by the Board of Ed. And I really encourage them to say, then you have to speak up. If you have an idea, if you have something that you want to run with, or you have something that you want to deliver, it has, they have to be heard. The parents have to feel heard. All of the townspeople have to feel heard. If there's a separation and we don't have our fingers on the pulse of the community, I feel like we're not really doing what our responsibility is. Whether we can answer a question directly or not, whether we can personally affect change to that particular question, that remains seen, but it, we have to encourage our people in the town to get in touch with us and let us know what's going on.
Anyone else care to speak on this one? Okay, now this next one, oops, sorry, Mr. Gibson.
I was waiting. Yeah, critical race theory and anything similar is racist. Any program that promotes the idea that your position or the character of who you are is based on the color of your skin is racist. This program or idealized, this idea starting in colleges in the 70s and it should remain at a college level, maybe, it's all across corporations in America. They're using it as compliance things, and they're using critical race theory as a weapon to yield. Did I say that right? I don't think there's a conversation to have. Critical race theory is racist. I will not vote for anything that would promote those values.
Mr. Gibson, I think you missed the first part of the, that I read from the New Jersey School Board Association, the two parts, that it is not mandated, number one, and the other part, and I encourage, if you have not watched the video, it is available on YouTube. As potential board members, I suggest watching it, because one of the things the representative from the New Jersey School Board Association forewarned is if a school board member decides to express their opinion, Mr. Sarno kind of said, well, maybe you can do it as a parent, but the problem is you can flip yourself out of any conversation. So I'm just going to tell you what I saw on the video, because I became educated as a result. Go ahead.
Would I, would I be out of line to say that as a candidate, to say that if, in the future, if mandates are produced or suggested, that I would be a hard no vote against them?
I, I'm not a soothsayer, I'm just letting you know what, I encourage you to watch that video. It is available.
Yes, ma'am.
The next question is rather lengthy, but it's, one of my students over here said to me, wow, you're really going to read that whole thing? I didn't come up with it. This one came from a member of the public, and it has a lot of validity. Like I said, these questions come from a member of the public who is familiar with the way school boards act, and he added this preface and told me to include, and asked me, didn't tell me to do anything. Several candidates here voiced concerns about the Barnega Township School District's academic performance as measured by statewide standardized testing. The results of the testing have not been disputed. Under existing New Jersey law, Board of Education members have authority that is limited to oversight of the district administration's performance, budgeting, and personnel recommendations. Board members have authority only when the board is in legal session. The questions for all of you are, and like I said, it's a few of them, but I'm putting them all together. Who do you hold accountable for the substandard academic assessment? What remedial actions, up to and including discipline, demotion, and determination, would you recommend, given the reality of the test scores? How can townspeople be rest assured that any proposed academic fixes will not result in tax increases? And lastly, will you support reduction of funding for extracurricular activities such as bangles, et cetera, to help pay for any increased academic costs? This one I think is important, and I know it's so lengthy, that I am going to ask all of you to answer it, though. I think this is what taxpayers need to know. Ms. Tornaski?
All right, so we'll start on who do we hold accountable? Well, you know, unfortunately, we're all a little bit accountable. The administration's a little bit accountable, the parents are a little bit accountable, the teachers are a little bit accountable, the student itself is a little bit accountable. We're all a little bit accountable. You know, there's so many cogs that go into this. It's not just, you know, little Joey joined our district and tanked all of the scores across the board. It's, you know, we needed to make change, and change is happening, it's happening actively. And there, we're heading in a great direction. So for accountability, you know, and as far as remedial actions, I don't, I believe reeducation is the remedial action that needs to happen. We have a unique opportunity where the reconsolidation of the schools allow teachers to be able to collaborate, and although COVID-19 stopped a lot of that, I believe the collaboration has also made it a unique opportunity to allow teachers to use their fallbacks to fall back on.
Anyone else care to address this? Mr. Allmending?
Thank you. I think as far as accountability is concerned, that applies to everyone, from teachers, administrators, board members to provide the resources, and also parents' involvement. I am a very strong proponent of parent involvement. Sending the child to school every day doesn't mean that, you know, the school ends at 3:00 and that's the end of the education. We need the parental support. So as far as I'm concerned, accountability is the community as a whole first, and the only way to improve that is to get more parental involvement in that respect.
Thank you, Ms. Allmending. Ms. Levy?
As far as accountability, I don't think we can blame anyone. I think that Barnega, from what I understand, has had some problems with test scores for the last many years. I believe that the new administration is moving towards correcting that problem. I think they've really improved their curriculum, from what I can see. I think they're working towards improving test scores. How do we improve test scores? Number one, we've got to give our teachers tools, and number two, they have to also get the professional development on an ongoing basis to utilize those tools in a way that will help all of our kids. The townspeople and the taxes, we can shift money as easily as not buying one thing and picking another thing for use for professional development funds. The reduction in funding for athletics would be the last thing I would think of, if possible.
Anyone? Mr. Merd?
I would agree. I think responsibility of all residents of the town. Professional development is ongoing, it should be ongoing. Teachers that graduated two years ago, or three or five years ago, or 20 years ago, things have changed. Students have changed. So you have to change with them. You need the professional development. As far as reducing extracurricular activities, I would say no to that. There are so many areas. When you create a positive learning atmosphere, and that's what sports helps to do, all programs, whether it's the band, whether it's the oratory contest, it doesn't matter, whatever, you create a positive atmosphere, kids come to school, they want to be here. And if they're here, they have a more, a better opportunity to learn.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Washburn?
I also agree that we would need to hold all of ourselves accountable. I think it falls on the parents, I think it falls on the students, I think it falls on the district as a whole. I wouldn't reduce extracurriculars because I really believe that that supports student engagement, and student engagement is huge in terms of testing in the long run. I think it's important to take a deep dive and find out why the test scores aren't where they need to be, and then address those areas. When you're looking at certain areas that aren't doing well in testing, those are the parts that you address, and you find a way to address them, whether through professional development, teacher engagement, all of that plays a part, and I think if we spend the time and the attention, I think that we can improve them.
Thank you, Mrs. Washburn. Mr. Fedorsik?
So Regina, right? You nailed the accountability answer down back. I mean, it is everybody. But ultimately, it does come down to the administration. The board does sit down, do a superintendent evaluation at the end of the year with his board, you know, his district goals, and they need to meet those goals, and that's up to the board to make sure that he has the tools and the assets and the ability to do that. As far as remedial and not impacting taxes, we've actually had that happen this year with grants that came in from the state to try and alleviate some of the projected gaps that are going to be caused by COVID. We had Bengal boot camp, we had some intervention going on down in the Collin School, which, you know, my daughter was involved with. So there are ways to do it without increasing tax. As far as defunding any other extracurricular, I hope we never, ever, ever have to come to that conversation, because it's just unacceptable. We've already cut back just amongst many districts. You know, VOTEC, would love to be able to see some of that back, but.
Thank you. Mr. Gibson?
Hey, how you doing? Hello. In a surprising move, I'm going to go ahead and alienate all the voters. I mean, I'm looking at this, there's a board election coming up, and there's 40 people here. I go to all the meetings, there's an average of 10 people in the audience, including the press, and that's how you get this lot on stage. If there's not involvement in the community, and it's not our top priority, this is, nothing against any of you guys, I'm included, this is who ran, this is who cares. We don't all collectively, there should be 100 people running for this position, 100 people saying, I care this passionately about this school system. I blame the empty seats, because when you elect, when you can take the best and put them up here, then we're all just doing the best we can up here. We care, and we're going to do the best we can, but what if we can find the right guy to come up here, and the right guy actually cares to be up here?
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. I'm going to turn the mic over to our next student. Oh, Mr. Sarno, I thought, can you speak?
No, I didn't.
I'm so sorry.
It's all right, quite all. Okay, on this topic, my view's a little different than everybody else's. Is it blame to go to everybody? Yes. As a community, when you are a community, community should function together. I don't know every parent out there, I cannot judge every parent and their situation and how they work with their kids, so I can't fault every parent. Every parent's situation's different. My view is that as an elected official in the Barnega Board of Education, you are selected, chosen by the public to represent them when it comes to their children's education. That is your responsibility. So does he fault for, with you, the Board of Education? Absolutely, higher than anybody else. The Board of Education hires a superintendent, the Board of Education proves the superintendent recommends everything in the district. Exactly. But at the end of the day, if the board doesn't prove it, it doesn't happen. And the board does work with the superintendent and the administration on every aspect of the district, believe it or not. So the board is held accountable.
Thank you, Mr. Sarno. Now I'm going to turn this over to one of our student representatives. Thank you.
Thank you. My question to you today is, do you plan to advocate for life skill classes into the school, such as carpentry or metalworks? VOTEC is already an option, but for some kids, it's not optimal. What are you going to go, what are you going to do for these kids that cannot do VOTEC? And along those same lines, would you consider shifting from spending money on new technology? Why can't we have more classes like home economics, auto body, or more language classes? Go ahead.
Yes, I'm a junior carpenter by trade. I, I think that's a fantastic idea, and I'm glad to hear that from a student, that's a good student question to hear, that it seems that there is a need and a want there. I think it's a tremendous opportunity. College is not the only way to go. We need to support our trades. And I tell you, I already have a plan to reach out to community members, businesses, business owners, organizations, to throw up little $500 scholarships to people who want to go into trades. I just did a six-year apprenticeship, and I'll tell you, a set of tools and a pair of boots to start off my career, when I started day one, would have helped me tremendously. And the same thing goes for military people going into multi-rail-to-high school, maybe a personal trainer, gym membership, and like a dinner with the mayor before they go out, so they know that we got their back, because they're willing out there for us. So college is not the only way, and I know everyone wants to be fiscally responsible, but we should look at, if you guys want home ec, you want stuff like that, come talk to us.
Okay. Mr. Merd?
Excellent question. Excellent question. Life skills are so very, very important. Everybody does not go to college, even the kids that do go to college have to know life skills. It's for life. I think the other important thing to remember is that many people learn the tactile, the feel, the touch. So carpentry and plumbing, it's important, that's how they learn, and it's very important. It was the worst thing I ever did, as far as I'm concerned, as a pre-K through 8 teacher and principal, when they took shop and home ec out of the elementary school. Those kids were lost, they really were. They were lost. Thank you.
Ms. Washburn?
I have spent the last 12 years of my career working in career education, the director of admissions for Lincoln Technical Institute. I feel strongly in teaching life skills, I feel strongly in having some kind of technical VOTEC option within the school, not leaving the school's walls, but having it right on campus. VOTEC is not accessible for all of our students at all times. While we do have a great program in Ocean County, it is not accessible for all of our students. I have students come to me time and time, right out of high school, that have not been taught any of the life skills, and that's a shame. It's part of what's going to make them successful in life, and they have to be able to learn the soft skills, how to represent themselves in an interview. All of those kinds of things are really important. Technical education is really important, also helps with student engagement. I think it's really important for us to evaluate our budget, find where we can cut and get it back into our schools where it's been lost.
Yes, sir.
I would support any program to institute classes or training for specific jobs such as electrician, auto mechanic, and so on, especially in our society today. We need people in the trade area to fulfill jobs that are vacant at this point, and teaching life skills, again, is an important part of all this. And I would definitely support any program that we would have in the Barnega School District that would promote life skills.
Yes, ma'am.
Throughout my 35 years as a teacher in a public school, I saw what happened when no child left behind program came into being in the 1980s. We were so consumed by state testing and state mandates that our children were falling behind on the educational academic aspects of life. Once the state mandates came in and state testing became forefront, all of the courses that involve life skills were dropped from the curriculum, and students had to take double math courses, double English courses, so we could get them to pass the state tests. Unfortunately, it also had a negative effect on many kids. We have to prepare kids for life, not just for academics and college.
Yes, Ms. Tornaski?
All right, so like Ms. Washburn said, right? I was hoping I would get it right. You know, these skills and these classes are so incredibly important, they're, it is a heartbreak that they aren't still involved in the curriculum, in the classes, in the schools as of right now. I would also agree that budget would probably be a big topic if that's brought up to the current board. But I hope and would work towards definitely reinstating and finding where we can move and shift some funds around, so this way we can bring back things that the students want, because sitting there for, you know, six, seven hours in school, and you don't have that class that you had hoped could possibly lead you into could possibly lead you into something that you would enjoy doing for the rest of your life is sad and not really acceptable.
Mr. Sarno?
Thank you. I have to say, honestly, it's very refreshing to hear a student in high school bringing up vocational classes, life skills. I don't hear that very often. So applause to you guys for bringing it to the table. Excellent question. One of the biggest industries hiring these days are sustainable jobs is your carpentry, plumbing, HVAC, all of those different industries. And they're paying some of the highest wages these days with sustainable jobs that are all over the country. Some outpaying, you know, your white collar jobs these days. So again, the jobs are there, the industry is turning. And today, for life skills, again, you know, some of the students and children, their only engagement they have these days is through a fund, interacting with people. They don't have the interaction skills, especially under COVID situations, that we did and that previous do. I have one child who's currently in the Army and I have one child who is in HVAC for a ground and vocational school. So again, I understand what you're talking about and it definitely is needed in our district interstate.
Sorry, you, sir?
Anthony, right?
Yes.
Great question. Yeah, I was fortunate enough to go to Southern where we had those things. Mr. Beverly, teaching, you know, automotives, whether it was Mrs. Fitzgerald, who I had the chance of doing both home ec and sewing, so I can do my own buttons without having to ask my mother. You know, we need to bring those things back in. Mr. Post just learning how to do a checkbook. So while we're sitting here, my mind's jogging. And we actually have something similar to that for a special, you know, something that we do. We teach life skills for a special ed group that's in school. And it's CBI SLE of the programs, where they go out and they do customer-based slash employee-based programs. They learn those life skills. To try and help cause, I would love to be able to sit down and see if we can figure out something for, you know, our students that are looking to go to VOTEC and see if there are plumbers, electricians, and whatnot out in the community that would be willing to bring on those students where they can do their core classes somewhere throughout the day. And then the rest of the day, they're spent pretty much being journeymen with, you know, learning that trade. So it's definitely something that can be discussed.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Social media campaign stuff. I don't like it when you guys write things because then I have to ask you about them. So with that in mind, one of the candidates that's before us this evening obtained and released an email exchange between a school board member, a coach, and the superintendent. The school board member demands that the coach explain his role in an event that occurred in a football game. He also tells the superintendent to remember that he is the boss. Is this the proper protocol under the New Jersey School Board guidelines? Or what is your understanding of the chain of command in this instance, if you were upset about something? Mr. Sarno, I'm turning to you first.
Well, I'm not afraid to admit that yes, I am the one that brought that to light. I did put an open request into the district. And legally obtained, as you know, being a reporter, we can legally obtain those types of things. Do I believe, I'm trying to get back to your question, but do I think that it's proper for an elected official, after that matter? Absolutely not. Chain of command, again, as I stated earlier, you are not a board member when you are an individual by yourself. You only be a board member when you are with the board in session. You, even in session, ethics, as you spoke about earlier, under the ethics of New Jersey ethics, you are not charged with running the district. You are charged with overseeing the district. The superintendent and the administration run the district. They are the paid professionals, the trained professionals. So again, you do not reprimand teachers. You do not reprimand staff. You do not make decisions on what should happen with staff. You are there to work in conjunction with the superintendent and the administration on these matters.
Thank you, Mr. Sarno. Anybody else care to address that? Ms. Levy?
Unfortunately, what happened was that the email was brought up to the attention of the public and it happened in 2020. It was an event that was passed. It shouldn't have been brought up. It was a person who wasn't running for the board. They serve on the Board of Education. And I feel it was not, no matter whether you were running for the Board of Education or on the Board of Education, I don't believe it was your place. I think you should be up here telling what you're going to do for our district when you become a board member. And that's it. Sorry.
Mr. Murn?
I would just say, chain of command is very important, always. If a parent has a problem, you go to the teacher. If you're not satisfied, you can go to the vice principal or the principal. If a parent of a student who was in athletics has a problem, you go to the coach. If that doesn't work, you go to the athletic director. There's steps that you follow to get the process completed. You don't jump over steps. You follow the steps. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murn. Anyone else care to? Mr. Fedorsak?
Currently on the board, as I said. I was appointed back in November. So the issue occurred before I came up here. I do agree with Ms. Levy. It was last year. It's ongoing and it's still being dealt with. But to answer the question that you had presented, which was, is it appropriate? No, it's not appropriate.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else care to address the issue? Mr. Gibson?
As an elected official, your civil duty is to be a servant to the constituents. You have no power, you are a servant. You serve the voters in whatever role you've been elected for.
Okay. Anyone else care to speak? Okay. I'm gonna go on to the next question. Another uncomfortable question. At the August Board of Education meeting, four members showed up without masks. At least one has indicated that they were of the opinion that the executive order was unclear at that time or did not apply. The district's teachers' union president reported their failure to wear masks and also chastised the members for failing to set up, to set an example for students and staff. Three of the four that didn't wear masks were not present for last night's monthly meeting. It is unknown, I want to make that clear, whether their failure to appear was related to their refusal to wear masks. Does this in any way help the Board of Education if you stand by something like, you know, if you decide not to show up because you disagree with, if that is the case? Mr. Fedorsak?
Again, I'm currently on the board and we deal with the issue. You know, we all have our personal opinions. Thing is, is when we're up here in a dais, our personal opinions need to go aside. I do not agree with the actions, but it is their actions that's their right to do that. In the end, the only people that hurts are the students. We have a job to do and that's to support the administration so they can do what's right for our students. We need to get past some of the pettiness and just get down to business, which is the school board.
Thank you so much. Mr. Iamonte?
What I'd like to add is that it's a mandate. And I think we should follow the mandate, whether, you know, we'll be in the building such as this or in an enclosed area. As far as the personal choice, everybody talks about, well, I have a personal choice. I totally agree with that, that you have a personal choice. However, to me, a personal choice is, would be what kind of car I drive, what kind of coats I wear. That's fine. It doesn't affect anyone else. Not wearing a mask, all right? Not wearing a mask affects the health of other people. Therefore, to me, at that point, the personal choice ends because now I'm affecting somebody else's life on this. I do not agree with the action that was taken on that board for whatever reason, but I totally don't agree with it.
Thank you, Mr. Iamonte. Mr. Murn?
When you are sworn in as a board member, you take an oath. And the oath says you'll follow the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey under the authority of the people. You are supposed to follow that. It was a mandate. It's not a personal choice at that point. You're mandated, you have a position to follow. You should be here. You must follow that. Do you have personal choice in certain things? Yes. But as a board member, you're representing all of the students, everybody. You're setting an example. The mandate was there. You should follow the mandate.
Thank you, Mr. Murn. Ms. Tarnaski, sorry.
So like Mr. Fedorsak said, you know, the fact of our personal beliefs has nothing to do with our stance or our representation to the community. We are representatives of every single person that votes for us. If, you know, you come on stage and you don't agree with something, then your disagreement needs to still fall within lines of state mandates. And those mandates were made fairly clearly that in-school buildings, masks were to be mandated, regardless of the activity. As of, you know, yesterday's board meeting, whether or not they didn't show up because of that is, you know, still unknown. If that was the case, then, you know, that's petty and that's, you know, not really being a representation for the community or the children as a whole, but rather that, you know, you had a hissy fit because you didn't like what the rules were. So, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Sarno?
Thank you. Again, if board members don't know that there was a mandate in place, which they did because their lawyer, actually, and I think it was your article, stated that it was well-versed to them, what the law, what the mandate was. If they don't know or they don't care, they shouldn't be serving in the Board of Education. You should know the policies of the board. You should know the rules of the ethics, code of ethics you have to follow and mandates that come down the pike for you. But a sworn oath, like Mr. Murn said, a sworn oath when you take the office to uphold the laws of New Jersey, whether you agree with them or disagree with them. You also, as one of your code of ethics, are supposed to put your personal beliefs and your political views aside. The only office on the ballot that doesn't have a Republican or Democrat next to it is the Board of Education. And I disagree with Mr. Fedorsak. It says it is their right to do that. It absolutely is not their right. If it's a mandate and a law, it is not your right. They are not above the law. No board member is above the law.
Thank you, Mr. Sarno. Mr. Gibson?
Civil disobedience is a part of this country. These laws are tyrannical. These laws are unconstitutional. These laws are unscientific, unmedical, and dangerous. When you become a board member, the one power that you do have could be to buck back against Governor Murphy. I want the school to run. I want the school to function. But we do have a position here, and I think it's ironic or hypocritical or one of those words, that the people on stage who agree with masking also have no problem with the masking mandates. And/or, and/or, the people who have trouble with masking mandates personally because of the dangerous, tyrannical nature of them won't take a stand here. So if those three board members did not show up and protest, I'd be happy to join them.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Now, I have a list of questions for each of you individually. I am going to start with, see, I had questions prepared that got a little messed up, so I'm trying to fix them. Mr. Murn? You have worked as both a mayor and an educator.
Yes.
In your experience, do the two intertwine? Or are there conflicts as both entities are dipping into the pockets of taxpayers?
Well, I think they do intertwine, I mean, intertwine because the municipal part of every town collects the money for, to pay for the schools, to pay for the county, to pay for the town. But I don't think there's a conflict in either one. You sit down, you work on budgets. You work with the school. You don't work against the school. You work with the school. And you try to establish a positive atmosphere. Because once there's a positive, your attitude really determines your altitude. We've said that for many times. The more positive you can be, the better things work out. I think the school board should work with the town in as many ways as they can to accomplish our mutual goals.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Washburn? This question, again, comes from a member of the public. One of the current Board of Education members cannot vote on personnel issues, contract negotiations, or participate in the superintendent's evaluation because she has a family member who works for the district. Is it true that your husband works for the district and that you may be conflicted out of the same discussions as a result? And do you see this as a concern?
Yes, it is true. My husband is in the maintenance department for the Barnegat Board of Education. I don't think it will be a conflict because I would gladly sit out of whatever I needed to sit out of as a result. I think there's lots more than just personnel to deal with on the Board of Ed. And I think that I'd still be able to be effective in my position if elected.
Okay. Thank you. I am going to ask one of the students to come up for Ms. Tarnaski's question. Because I am out of order, so they don't realize that I went out of order.
Hello, everybody. So Ms. Tarnaski, my question to you is, recently, most of the bathrooms at BHS have closed because of property damage caused by a TikTok trend. Are there any other ways you can think of to address this issue? Also, while we are on the issue of concerns about students that don't have to do with their studies, do you have any ideas on how to solve the vaping issue at BHS?
The what issue?
The vaping issue.
Okay. All right. So let's start with TikTok. I think that, first of all, this trend is absolutely heinous. It's horrifying that so much property damage has already been done. I believe that, you know, placing hall monitors at, you know, certain study periods for, you know, checking in and checking out of the bathroom would be beneficial. I'm not quite sure if that's fully implemented yet or if that's even a possibility. But it needs to be handled and quickly. As far as vaping, vaping shouldn't be allowed on school property whatsoever. It's the same issue, though, as, you know, has been lifetime. I mean, we need to take a stand against it and we need to educate accordingly towards moving forward and leaving the say no to drugs, the dare, the things of that nature. I believe those need to be re-implemented and enacted upon.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Iamonte? Hold on a minute. I have to find the questions since I went out of order.
Okay.
The representative from the New Jersey School Boards indicated that board members are charged with policymaking tasks and oversight. What exactly does that mean to you?
All right. Can you repeat part of that question, please, again?
The representative that did the self-evaluation, that went over the self-evaluation with the New Jersey School Boards said, was very specific, said that the board members are charged with policymaking tasks and oversight. What does that mean to you?
What, well, what it means to me is that we are responsible for the function of the school district and responsible to the citizens of the community. As far as the evaluation, As far as the evaluation, we are, we should be able to evaluate, or we do evaluate, the superintendent, for example, the performance of the superintendent, and based on that, we would then provide information that it's necessary to complete the task.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Sarno, this question comes from a member of the public. Might be the reason social media is fun, right?
Sure.
Well, based on your personal statement, advertising, and the exchanges you've had on social media, and I think there was a mail or two, there's one thing that seems to have been missing. You served this Board of Education an awful long time. The public is wondering why you have not mentioned that to the general people. That's one thing. Then the next is, you've also accused the current members of whole voting for grade banding changes. There's only one person left on the board right now, Mr. Hickey, whose term is up now. I covered those meetings, so that part I know, who voted for grade banding. You, in fact, did vote for grade banding. The athletic field was approved during your tenure, the reconfiguration happened, a lot of things happened. Are you suggesting the additional expenses that you've pointed out, many of them related to capital expenses, are the fault of the current board, or are you just saying that when you were on the board, those were bad decisions, and that's why you're not mentioning it?
Okay. Let me correct you on one thing, Stephanie. I was not on the board and never voted on the reconfiguration. You were wrong there. Reconfiguration came up when I was the board president my last year, and I know Mr. Laus I believe was sitting in the audience, I am the one that stopped it, because I said the board will not support it at this time, and it would look funny to have half the board support it and the half not support it.
Actually, I apologize. I'm just gonna mention that you're absolutely right. That was a year before.
Okay. Yes, it was. How come I haven't put that, I served in the Board of Education, majority of people, I think, very majority of the people in town know, I've been involved in the Board of Education for over eighteen years, myself and my ex-wife. And my, what I did in the Board of Education, really, at this point, is not the focus. Most of the issues out there right now is what's happening with this Board of Education, the turmoil that's going on in this Board of Education, the expenses, the budget that's going up, I think, went fifteen percent in the last two years since I've left. The spending that I did from the field is nothing compared to the $6 million in Atlake projects they spent last year. So again, all of these things are, you know, play into it. I know the public only wants to figure out my past history. I never raised taxes in five years in leadership on the board. Every year, four to five years, we reduced taxes, and one year, we had a zero tax increase. So again, I'm not ashamed of my record to anybody, but at this point, it's really about what's happening on this board, and the lack of productivity, the main issues, the people thinking they're above the law. So again, I think it's important to point out to the public what is happening now.
Mr. Sarno, I will ask you one more, point out something, because I did a little research about the taxes, and you're right, I did make an error about reconfiguration. Taxes did not go up. I believe the current budget includes grants, and from what I, my review of the budget, because I did a lot of budget articles, that's something that I don't like doing, but I did do that, my review of the budget shows a lot of it were capital improvements, which the district contends were due to poor maintenance during the time.
The current board, not the district. The current board states that that's...
Actually, it's the district that has told me that. One example is, I'll give you a silly example. I know that I have to change the filter in my HVAC system at home regularly. I understand that those things were turned down by prior administrations. Now, that's an interesting thing, because we replaced an HVAC system, or we need to replace one in the high school, that is only 15 years old. That's expensive.
Yes, I know, because we replaced, I replaced one two years ago in the Brooklyn School, which, again, from the same issues, from the past administration, which I totally agree with you on.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that, that it is not the current Board of Education. I intentionally did not go to the current Board of Education, because that would be not the right thing to do.
The administration is saying the past administration, not the past board, the past administration ran this district into the ground.
Yes, the Board of Education is the oversight.
The Board of Education does not make recommendations. The superintendent does. The Board of Education can only approve their recommendations.
Okay. I'm just, you know, as I said, part of this question came from somebody else, not from me, and social media may be the downfall of people I know that I need to not be on its own path.
And with accuracy.
Okay. So, Mr. Gibson, I'm gonna go over to you. Your statement says, and I quote, that you're unqualified to serve on the board, which therefore makes you qualified. You might understand why that is a very confusing statement. Some find this confusing. You then go on to essentially criticize the current board for voting to enforce executive orders instead of risking personal punishment and consequences dealing with their careers. You describe this as a conflict of interest as it relates to wearing masks in the district. What would you do differently if you were a board member?
Okay. Yeah. Sorry about the confusion. I don't hold any esteemed titles. I'm not a doctor, a lawyer, or accountant, or anything like that. It was explained to me at the meeting that while, by the board, I think it was the president, I don't know, he said that a lot of people on the board disagree with the mask mandates, but we are, our hands are tied because we could be held responsible and face consequences in our careers. And to me, that's a conflict of interest. They're putting their careers and their professions in front of the interests of the kids, so that means even if they don't agree with the efficacy of masking, they're gonna do it. And I don't think that's representing all parents. Even if you agree with their policy, that's not representing and serving their constituencies. And I'm fearful that when the vaccination mandates come, that their hands will still be tied. My hands will not be tied. I will be a no. They're not gonna take my license away. I will be a no.
Can you explain to me a no for what? What was voted on that you feel you would be a no to? You wouldn't have opened the schools, because that's the only thing that they voted on was the reopening plan.
Yes, ma'am. And I want to be clear that the executive orders, as it was explained to me, must be passed by the board, or the board, or the school could risk shutting down. Is that, is that what you explained to me?
I, no, I think that that's what I'm not understanding, and that's why I want to open this dialogue with you, because the only thing that the board didn't vote whether we should have masks or not, well, kind of indirectly, they did, they voted on a reopening plan, that they had to get approved by the county superintendent. If they did not include masking mandates in there, and I've been to other board meetings besides this, I've been to a few districts that have come with the same thing, if they didn't include it, the county superintendent sends it back and said, "I'm sorry, you gotta include this, or you don't get to open the schools." Is that, like, what you want to happen?
No, no, that's not what I want to happen. What I want to happen is to have pro-choice. I want people to be able to make parental decisions for their children. At the same time, I want our board to have a backbone to say, "No, we're gonna run our school independently, and with what's best for our parents, and run from a local level." But I want them to not have their hands tied and not be forced to do it, and to have the backbone to stand up and say no. And then deal with whatever consequences may be. But I have a strong suspicion that if one board turns it down, one board stands up, others will follow. And that wasn't the board this year, maybe we can be that board next year.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Fedorsak, I have two different issues, and you get them both, because you're on the current board. All right. At that same August meeting, you were there, I was there, and you were certainly there. You did something very unusual at that meeting. What did you do?
So it was in reference to masks?
Yes.
Again, when you're up here in a day, it's your personal opinion, cannot come out. You need to try and conduct business as an orderly board.
You have to speak a little louder, you're...
Oh, I'm sorry. You need to conduct, you know, business as an orderly board. Mr. O'Brien, the president, did give us an opportunity when it came time to mask if we wanted to speak. I felt that had I spoken at that point in time, it would have violated my, you know, board business, and I requested to step down to the podium during public comment. He did grant that, and if he would have said no, that would have been fine, but I felt that I needed to get myself, my opinion out, and the only way that I could do it that evening, so I had gone down to the podium.
Can you do me a favor and synopsize your opinion?
Essentially saying that I do think that it should be parental choice, and ultimately came down and said, you know, for Mr. Murphy to bring it back to the board for a local decision.
Did the current board do anything as far as that?
Absolutely. Actually, Mr. O'Brien pretty much head-started something just, you know, within local school districts, reaching out to them to see what type of interest they would have in generating a letter. The idea was to go in en masse. However, every district has their individual problems or individual issues, so there was no cookie-cutter letter that would have helped everybody out or worked, you know, would have been beneficial for all the districts.
When you speak of a letter, who are you talking about a letter to?
To the governor. The governor's office itself.
So the Burngate School District sent a letter. Did you, do you know if anything came back on that?
That I don't, that I honestly, I don't know. I'm assuming you're still here, so, you know, if something's in transit, yeah.
So since you're the only one up here on the current board, I gotta ask you the next question. The budget.
Yes.
If you look at the numbers, budget and taxes are two different things.
They are.
When I spoke with, when I interviewed Mr. Brennan about the budget, he gave me a lesson. He told me I'll be ready to be a CPA one day. Probably not. I don't like math, but he explained to me how the budget works. She's not happy about that. He explained to me how the budget works, and that there were no tax increases. Why were we able to increase our budget so much and not have tax increases, please?
Well, the main thing right now is grants. So for this year alone, the operating budget total, I think, for '21-'22 is just over $72 million. The tax levy is what, is the money that's needed from the community to support the budget, which is, which was roughly about $35, $35 million. It was like a .007 cents on every hundred dollars assessed on a house, extremely minimal. But state aid, we had $21 million in state aid, and special revenue, which includes, you know, federal aid, there's the grant for pre-K, the COVID aids that were out there. It's the most it's been since 2014, which is just over $8.5 million. So yes, your budget's gonna be higher because you have to include those in the budget. I don't sit on the finance committee, so it's even more difficult for me as a board member, because I'm not there when all those discussions happen, and we rely on it when we come up to the stage here, but I just got the red card, so I gotta stop.
Okay. I wasn't looking. Mrs. Levy, your turn. Your credentials say that you are Director of Curriculum. Therefore, I think you're kind of qualified to answer this question. What is one area, putting aside that the board doesn't make recommendations, what is one area in the school's curriculum that you've learned about that you feel needs more focus? And then, a member of the public, this is something I'm hoping you can speak on, has also asked us to question you regarding learning styles. Do you know if the district does, or has plans to nurture different types of learning styles?
First of all, based on the curriculum, I believe that during my years of experience as the Director of Curriculum, I realized that in order for our students to meet or exceed state standards, we have to have updated curriculum. The updated curriculum has to be looked at very carefully, because each state has their own set of standards. What may work for New Jersey may not work for another state. After that, we have to map the curriculum to the standards, and at that point, we have to look at each of our children individually to see what kind of a learner they are, if they are a visual learner, if they're a person who learns by doing hearing, and we have to promenade by different tools with the district.
Thank you very much. I know that one of the students has a question for somebody that I didn't ask yet, right? Or did I just ask a question that I shouldn't have? Let's see. That was one of the student's questions. I apologize. I apologize to the student that I overran with that. Okay. Here's a good one. Edward School was shut down several years ago and is in a state of dilapidation. The board president announced last night that it would appear most cost-effective to tear it down. First of all, what do you know about the school's history of being shut down? You know, apparently, everything was shut off, there's asbestos, everything in it. Do you agree with it being torn down? And what should happen next? I mean, if they tear it down, then we're gonna have vacant land there, so what should happen? Who wants to tackle that one? Ms. Tarnasky.
Okay. I'll try to go quick, because last time I got the red card. So, it would be fiscally irresponsible for us to tear the Edward School down. Do I know the history? I know that my mom's told me the history. Other than that, I don't really know the full history, besides it's an absolutely beautiful building to look at and drive past, and I think it would be a really pivotal, beautiful monument of our town. But unfortunately, due to safety concerns, money, and, you know, children vandalizing, kids breaking in, the possibility of squatters and all that, we really can't, as a community, expect the Edward's building to stand as is. It's like 25 million, a lot of money. So, I think that the historical facade should be saved. I believe that it should be torn down. The land should be a new building put up, whether it be a rec center, some sort of community center for the students, where it can house fields for the teams, or clubs for after-school activities, and that original facade be, you know, restored to its beautiful, glorious self. It could be extremely useful for the township. I mean, it... I got the red card.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't look further than...
I'm trying to listen to the rules.
Anybody else have a... Mr. Murin?
The Edward School to be demolished is gonna be extremely expensive. I understand that. And to try to bring that up to the standards of 2021 would be overtly costly. It's just unbelievable, we have state mandates for state upgrades. I agree it should be demolished. I would think that they could work with the town, or with some sort of playground developer to create a center for students. It could be enclosed in some areas, but it could be an open-air playground area for the students, for all children. Thank you.
Mr. Fedorsak.
I'm one of the lucky people who gets to sit on that committee, and it drives me nuts, because, you know, I grew up, I didn't attend the school, but I was in there, played basketball, so there's a lot of rich history there. You know, unfortunate circumstance, and the realist in me is that it's gonna have to be torn down, and that's pretty much what was relayed last night. I do not want to see apartment buildings there, as was mentioned in a very previous Township Committee meeting, when we were looking at a land swap, but I'm not gonna get into that. What I would like to see is some form of the facade saved. I would like to see an open-air amphitheater. This way, our theater group, you know, we ran into it through COVID, where we had to stop everything indoors, we can use those for outdoors. The issue with a new building and whatnot, for the school to be able to get grant money from the state or federal whatnot, there has to be some type of a student learning center involved with it, and it just gets very, a whole lot of red tape for what we're doing. It's too much to go through for here, but...
Thank you, Mr. Fedorsak. Mr. Sarno.
Just to give you a little history on the school, the school closed back in 2007. I was on the Board of Education, not afraid to admit it. I voted to close the school. At the time, that Edward School was housing about 20 staff members from the district. It was costing us then, in 2007, $150,000 approximately a year to run, retain, electricity, water, everything else we had to do for it. And at that point, we thought it was crazily expensive to house 20 staff members to use as offices. So we voted as a board to close it down. Do I think it should be torn down? Again, it's, you're talking about cost. What are you gonna do with the land? What's your outlook? Are you gonna sell it? Are you gonna build on it? Are you gonna, I think this Mr. Fedorsak said, put something on there educationally that the school can use? That, again, gets very costly and can go up very quickly. So again, there's a lot more to think about than just saying, "Let's tear it down." Let's tear it down and do what with it. Don't just leave it vacant.
Thank you, Mr. Sarno. Anyone else? Okay. While we've been here, we have received other questions. Some of them we've touched on, but I'm gonna ask this one. How does each candidate see the role of parents in supporting the educational goals of our schools, and would they support offering workshops to assist them? Mr. Fedorsak.
I, I'm the lucky one who's been up here for three candidate forums, and I think it's come up. It's one of the things I would like to see. Curriculum changes. We saw it with math, when, the way I did math as a kid was completely different than the way these kids are doing math as a kid. And I think it was actually with Ms. Santola, who's in the crowd here. We sat through a meeting, we were discussing, because I had some concerns with my own children, and one of the recommendations I made was, "Let's have a parent night..." let's have a parent night where we can try and teach them some of the concepts that are going on so they can go home and better reinforce. Our student success, yes, it's gonna happen in the classroom, but it needs to be reinforced at home. And if the parents are lost, there's no way they're going to be able to help them. So, yes, absolutely workshops.
Thank you. Mrs. Levy.
Stephanie, when you mentioned that you didn't like math, it kinda chilled me because I've heard that for my whole career. Unfortunately, we can't let our children know that. And as Mr. Fedorczek says, we have to provide them the knowledge, the ability to feel a little bit more comfortable with the changing math. Believe it or not, I began teaching in nineteen seventy-two and there was a new math program then. Math changes the way we present it, the way we show it to children. It's conceptual now. We're teaching kids sometimes something that may be above their ability. We were asking about different learning styles. I was asked about different learning styles before. There are some times when the concept gets in the way of the actual production of the math theory. So, yes, meeting with parents would be great to show them different concepts, to show them different ways to address the new math programs. And also, a family math night would be terrific.
Thank you, Mrs. Levy. Ms. Ternowski.
I, I love the idea of parent workshops. And I don't just mean for math. I mean for everything. Mental health, that's a big one that would be great to have parent workshops on. How to handle, you know, everyday things with your children to get the parents involved in their students' education. Doesn't have to, mental health is a broad spectrum that doesn't just cover, you know, how my kid is doing in math, which is, you know, still relevant and it still covers it. If he's stressed out about math, I'm stressed out about math. And, I mean, I've spoken with Bonnie about the fact that I'm already stressed out about math. But it goes so much further than that. The workshops could be encompassed of any section of parent involvement in their child's education, parent involvement in the community. It can go across the board. And I love the idea of parent workshops.
Mr. Murn.
Absolutely agree with parent workshops. As an example of how to teach things, years ago, the eighth grade had to take an eighth-grade test. And what they had to do was give an math answer, show how they got the answer, and explain the answer. So, you got one point for each. You could actually get the right answer and only get one point. Where somebody who got the wrong answer but tried to explain what he did and show what he did, got two points. Doesn't make sense. As an example, my grandson, before he went to school, amazing kid when it came to math. Before kindergarten, he could have had two-digit numbers in his head. But when he went to school and they started to teach math, he couldn't understand why he wasn't getting all the scores he was supposed to get. He got the right answer. My daughter and her husband had to relearn how to teach math. It is important. We should have as many workshops as we can to help parents because that's where the education occurs also, not just in the building, but at home. We have to reinforce the concepts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murn. Ms. Washford.
I believe when we're talking about student success, I really believe that it takes a village, and the village starts with the parents. The parents have to be involved in the student's educational journey. They have to understand, at least on a small scale, what the student is doing in the classroom. I think it's really important that we do offer such workshops. Maybe poll the parents, see what kind of workshops they need, see what's most in need so we're really getting out the part of the education that needs to be addressed. There may be things that we think personally need to be addressed, and really, the parents are understanding that, and they're not connecting with another part of it. I think polling the parents and what they need help with is probably gonna be really helpful for the students and for the parents.
Thank you so much. Mr. Sarna.
As you were asking me, what are the parents, you know, child's education? Again, I believe child's education does not stop when it dropped off on the bus, at the bus stop at the end of the day. Parents play a huge role in their children's education. They're there, again, to support that they're doing the homework, doing the studying, doing the reading, doing all the essential things that they have to do outside of the class to succeed in the class. Me, as a parent, my workshop has been for my kids, YouTube. That's where I get my information. Even being a teacher, things advance so quickly in education. Trying to keep up is, as a parent and living on a life, is not an easy task. And one of the ways they can do a workshop is obviously using technology, whether it's through, you know, parents can sit at home on a computer. They can go onto the board website, pull up a workshop that's been pre-done on math, on reading, on different things that are happening in our classes. And they can just go right on there and click at their convenience, you know, to look into these things and make it easier on them and more time convenient.
Mr. Gibson.
All right, because of our masking choice, we've been forced to homeschool. Well, I used to say forced. I really didn't wanna do homeschooling. But I bring this up because of the workshopping. I'll be a testament. It's great because you get to work with your neighbors. You work, everyone has their strengths and their weaknesses, and you get to identify things outside of school. I would support it. I know it works. It's absolutely fantastic. So, I'd definitely support it.
Thank you. Mr. Ayamonte.
One just last comment. I totally agree with all the candidates on the stage that workshops are very important because nowadays, because of technology also, a lot of the parents are not up on technology. And that we need to have workshops. And also, a lot of the parents are afraid to get involved with the children. So, we need to do workshops to encourage the parents and teach the parents on how to help the child from possibly making a game. Let's say if a child doesn't like reading, and I know that happened with my youngest daughter. She, when she was in school, in kindergarten, she didn't wanna read. So, what my wife did, she made a game out of it. You read one line, I read the other line. And then she said, okay, see who reads the line faster. And this progressed to a point where she got the idea that, you know, she could beat her mother in reading. And now, you know, at her age, she's an adult, have a family. She's doing the same thing with her kids. And workshops would be fantastic, I think.
Okay, I'm going to, we got two more questions that I'm gonna combine because they're somewhat interrelated. One of the people who submitted a question said, what qualifications, credentials, and experience in education and/or financing, budget and planning, does each candidate have that would make them an asset to the board? And then I'm gonna go to the next person's question because I'm gonna combine the two so that we can get to your closing statements. This gentleman says, I feel spending in the district is out of control. Taxpayers are being treated as bottomless money pits, and the quality of education continues to decline. My children have encouraged us to move. What will you do as a candidate to reduce spending and improve the quality of education? We've kind of covered this, but let's do this as our final question. Who wants to start? Mr. Gibson.
As for the first part, none. I have no experience to bring to the table as far as budgeting, taxes, curriculum. So, if you're looking for that, do we have, take your pick. There's about three hundred years of experience up here. Respectfully, I'm just saying. I say, you guys are, this is an impressive field for the curriculum and everything you wanna know. If that's what you're looking for. I'm specifically here for one issue. That doesn't mean that, you know, I was a president pro tempore of a million-dollar student government at MacLach State University. I started over fifty organizations myself. I was a Boy Scout. I was in the Army.
Mr. Gibson, you know, I gotta say one thing that we haven't engaged here.
Yes.
Dodgeball.
Yeah, we can do that.
So, maybe you should explain that to everybody.
I just wanted to point out, see, I'm a little dummy. What I do bring here is my passion and my energy. I really do care about all children and I do care about this country. And I'm gonna come like a fireball. I'm gonna get with other leadership here, other people on the board. I will learn these issues. I will not make a single vote without understanding the issue and be fiscally responsible while providing for the most students. And the dodgeball thing, I'm glad you read it. It's a metaphor, you know. I want to raise warriors. I want our men and women to be strong and fearless. And I want them to know that life is, you know, full of diversity. And they're not always gonna have a timeout or a safe space. And they're gonna have to work through it, and they're gonna get hit in the face. They're gonna get knocked down. And that's part of life. And I think that dodgeball is the perfect place for all that to happen. Little microskills you learn, you know, you could be a little weakling, but you overcome your fear of the big guy at one time. You learn those little lessons and it's all right and it's all right there, so. And I won't force anyone to play dodgeball.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Mr. Murn.
I've worked on many budgets and I've listened to professionals before I make any decision on a budget. And I think what people have to realize that most of your budget is fixed. You've negotiated a contract. That's the biggest part of your budget is salaries. You have state mandates that have to do. It's no choice. So, there's very little movement in a budget to do things unless you can get grants from the state or the federal government. The other thing I think we have to realize is that everybody wants a raise. I wanted a raise when I worked and I expected to get a raise. So, that's one of the things that life is all about. Cost of living does go up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murn. Who would like to say something next on this issue? Financial, budgetary, Ms. Levy.
Well, you know my background on curriculum, so I don't think I have to say that. I've spent enough years working on curriculum. Second part is the finance part of it. I spent, in my part-time career, twenty-five years as H&R Block tax preparer. In my career as Director of Curriculum, I spent extensive time with the Board of Education creating the budgets for the years. And so, I think that I could add quite a bit. As far as keeping costs down, it's a difficult situation. Everybody's having problems with money. We understand that. We will try to keep our costs as low as possible. I would get voted out of Mirage Senior Community if I didn't watch the spending. But we will be fiscally responsible and watch every penny that we spend.
Thank you so much. Who wants to go next? Mr. Sarna.
Thank you. My background, again, I graduated from Wayne Patterson University. I have my K-25 certification, spent six years in education teaching. I worked twelve years in financial, working on budgets. I ran a business of my own for eight years in Barnegat. So, and also, obviously, put together five different budgets under my leadership on this board. And in those budgets, like I stated before, four of them reduced taxes and one had a zero-tax increase. All of that time, in that time, we never cut any programs. We added. We never cut staff. We added. We added administration. We added security. We added technology. We added a concession stand. We added a football field. I can go on and on about what we added, but we also reduced taxes. In the last eighteen years I've been involved in this district, that's only happened twice. Once, when the budget failed about ten years ago, the town came in, Township Committee, and obviously had to cut taxes because that was their, they had to. And then, once, about twelve years ago, the board itself reduced taxes. Those are the only two times in the last eighteen years besides the four times under my leadership on this board.
Thank you, Mr. Sarna. Ms. Washford.
I have spent, as I've said, the last twelve years in education, albeit a little bit different than your normal college four-year path. I deal with a lot of students that have taken a different path and have found the trades as the respite. I have worked well with Lincoln Tech on share-time programs with local school districts because they weren't able to house any VOTEC programs themselves. It proved too costly for them to put in those sort of programs at their schools. We were able to work out through negotiation a program where high schoolers currently come to my campus and are able to take VOTEC classes while at the school. I really believe that there's a way to work everything out through dialogue, through thinking outside of the box. My experience managing people, managing budgets over the years, I think, speaks for itself. And really, I'm here to help support the kids in our district. That's the most important part to me.
Thank you, Ms. Washford.
You're welcome.
Mr. Fedorsik. I'm gonna go around the table. It's easier.
So, my experience, you know, formal education as far as being a teacher or whatnot, you know, I do not have that. I did spend ten years in the Southern Regional School District as a substitute teacher, ran their program for substitutes as they were coming in. What I stand out with up here on the table is I have attended every single board meeting since the Thursday night meeting that we sat in here for reconfiguration. So, I'm aware of the issues. I've stayed engaged. I've made the contacts with the administration and, you know, whoever it is, and had conversation and dialogue, and that's what ultimately got me to start up here. In reference to the budget and the taxes and the spending, Mr. Murn, you know, hit it on the head. There's things that are going to increase, whether it's benefits, whether it's gonna be salaries. Those things are gonna happen. But spending isn't necessarily indicative of what the taxes are. You don't need to opera it. It's on the school website. Since 2014, the tax levy has increased roughly around a million dollars every year. It's stayed pretty stable. Not once have I seen it decrease. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ternowski.
All right, so as far as like qualifications in education and taxes and budget, I am pretty much just a full-time student for elementary education, heading in that direction. I hope to be a teacher. I, every job I've ever had has been working with children. And that brings me the most joy, advocating for children, being there for children. And as far as taxes go, I'm a single mom of four. I don't want our taxes to go up. I mean, I know cost of living does cause some interesting dilemmas, but that's not my priority or my prerogative. I, I'm a, I'm a single mom. Like, we don't want our taxes going higher. That's pretty much it.
Thank you. Mr. Ayamonte.
What I can offer, I have no experience in budget, in the budget. However, I do, what I can offer to the board is thirty-six years of teaching. Not only that, but understand the curriculum development. As far as the budget is concerned, I can look at numbers and determine whether they're out of control or not. As far as the spending is concerned, we all want a raise. I know when I was a teacher, we wanted a raise. And every person, that working person, wants a raise. So, that money has to come from somewhere. But we can make sure that the money is spent in the proper way, in the proper manner, that affects and benefits, I should say, the students and the school system. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're gonna go into our closing statements. And as all of you know, we pick numbers. My illustrious helpers here have eliminated the one number that was there. So, if you have a different number and you think I call you in the wrong order, it's because they were smart enough to catch it and fix it for me. I wanna thank each and every one of you, even for just running. This is tremendously stressful for you, I am sure, and it's a commitment. And I don't think that people know that you don't make one penny working for the Board of Education. Nearly, they've realized the time commitment, that it isn't just showing up for a meeting once a month. It's way more than that. I know that, you know, you're involved in many things and I commend you all for volunteering to do this, to put your names on the line. I know that you all care about our students and the success of them. So, without further ado, Mrs. Levy, you did it again. You picked number one.
I think I'm the luckiest. I think I have to buy a lottery ticket. Anyway, making the decision to run for the position of Board of Education member is a difficult decision that one shouldn't take lightly. Barnegat deserves committed individuals, people who have their children's educational and social and emotional growth as their number-one objective. The upcoming year certainly does present challenges to Barnegat in many reasons. It's been complicated by the pandemic, the state mandates, and a divided public reaction to everything. Barnegat schools will benefit by electing board members with the experience, background, and background that will enable them to support our administrators and faculty. Our board members must focus on Barnegat specifically and the problems that we have in this town. and the problems that we have in this town. One of our first concerns should be an improvement of test scores. We've talked about that, it's been an issue for Barnegat for many years. Again, providing teacher tools, providing them the professional development that they need to implement the tools and work with kids on an individual basis is crucial. We have to make sure the time, the money, and availability of collaboration is there for them. We have to support our teachers so that our teachers can give our children the education that they deserve in the new world they are going to be facing. Thank you for attending tonight. Please vote for 2F Bonnie Levy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Levy. Mr. Fedorsik.
First off, Stephanie, thank you for, once again, taking your time out to come up here and host this. Mrs. Kuvitz, Philip Anthony, Janet, and Adriana, thank you very much for your time. It was a pleasure having you all up here. I'm going to keep it short and sweet. I'm here for the third time, not because I like being up here at a forum, because I really do want to help out and be an advocate for our children in our school system. I've had the opportunity, as I said, to be appointed last year, and I want to continue that, you know, what I'd call some of the successes that we've done up to this point in this past year. I've learned a lot. Barnegat needs somebody up on this stage that's going to be able to put their personal political views aside and just going to get down to business and advocate for the children. All right, we can be a sounding board for the parents, but ultimately, we are here for the children. All right, we are here to hold the administration responsible for following policies and procedures, providing them with the assets and the tools that they needed to, you know, that they need to utilize to make sure that our children can be successful. All right? It's political season, it's nonsense. I'm not about that, you will never see it from me. What you see is what you get. I speak my mind. I do go against my own better judgment at times, even, you know, if it's something that I know is going to benefit the majority, it's what I will go with. With that, I come from a background of trust but verify. There's going to be literature coming out. Do not trust, but make sure you verify. Thank you, 4F. Vote for George.
Thank you, Mr. Fedorsik. Mr. Gibson.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name's Andrew Gibson. Slogan is Bring Back Dodgeball. It's an attention-getter. Listen, I'm the only pro medical freedom candidate up here. I'm the only person to speak out against critical race theory. I want to make clear, though, with the masking and vaccinations, I am not anti-maxing or anti-vaxining. I'm inter, I'm anti-my-children masking and my-children vaccinating. Am I clear about that? I'm anti-my-children. I think parents should have the right to protect their kids any way they want. I'm the most transparent candidate up here. I think it's important, if you want to run on taxes and all that stuff, all these candidates have said, or many candidates have said, you're only going to go one degree, one way or the other. And it is, things, prices go up, ba-ba-ba. So if that's what you're running on, then go vote for them. If you want to have an insurance policy against the future vaccination mandates of your children, it's going to be nice to have somebody like me on the board. And you can count on my vote. I'm going to start working with other members, too. It seems like there might be three or four people teetering. I'm going to work with them, and we're going to stand up to Murphy, and you're going to need me on the board. And I appreciate your time. Bring back dodgeball. I'm all the way down on the bottom. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Mr. Murr.
Thank you, Stephanie, teachers, students, and public for being here and viewing us tonight. Everyone's always worried about test scores. And there was a phrase that says, "If you always do what you always did, you always get what you always got," which means low test scores. Grade banding seems to be helping. The test scores are going up. It's great to see. But we still need more professional development for teachers, because things change all the time. I'd like to see a basic skills program, those kids that need extra help, to be a replacement program and not pull out. I don't want to take a child out of a math class for a reading lesson. When his class is doing reading, he should be coming out for extra help with reading, or somebody should be coming in to give them extra reading. All is not doom and gloom, by the way. There are 611 public high schools in the state of New Jersey. Barnegat is rated 249. That's in the top 40% of the state of New Jersey. I will always be here for students. Murr, 9F, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murr. Ms. Washford.
In closing, first, I'd like to thank everyone for attending, for watching, giving us the opportunity as well, Stephanie, to speak tonight, and providing us with such a great event in which to do so. I'm here to represent moms and dads across the district that don't feel as if they have a voice. I bring fresh eyes, a fresh perspective. I'm here to support our children and bring general care and concern to our board. I'm here to ensure that none of our children are lost in the shuffle, and that every single one has the opportunity to get the best education possible in the Barnegat school system. Lastly, and most importantly, I'm a mom that wants what is best for my daughter, and I want to make sure Barnegat is able to provide the best. Please consider voting 5F on the ballot on November 2nd, and together, we will be building tomorrow's leaders.
Thank you so much, Ms. Washford. Mr. Ayamonte.
Okay. The reason why I chose to run for the board was to make sure that we have, that our kids are successful. And in order to do that, we must provide the teachers, the students and the teachers with a safe learning environment. We must provide the resources, the community and resources to continue or to move forward. As far as the test scores, the school is moving in the right direction, and I would definitely support anything that would continue that forward movement with the test scores. I would like to see also programs implemented that would improve these test scores, such as remedial programs that we would have. The other thing that I would like to tell you is that if I am elected to the board, or any decision that I make will be to benefit the children, and there will be no political, no political involvement in my decision-making. I would also like to thank you for running this event. I'd like to thank the students and the teacher. I think this is a great learning experience for the students, and I think they did a great job. Finally, I would like to simply say that if you'd like to move forward and continue this forward movement of the district, vote for 1F on November 2nd. Excuse me, yeah, November 2nd, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Ayamonte. Mr. Sarno.
Thank you, thank you, Stephanie, for putting yourself in this event tonight. Really appreciate it. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank everyone who submitted questions and let us know where your issues are with the district and what's on our mind. I'd also like to thank the candidates that are up on stage tonight, bringing open and honest discussion to the floor that we all spoke upon. Though we may not all agree on the issues and what steps are needed to move the Barnegat School District to forefront of education in the state, I do believe we all have one thing in common. We care about the students, staff, and our town of Barnegat, at the end of the day. In my mid-forties, I decided to change my career. I went back to school and worked towards becoming a teacher. I understood the impact that education had on me and how it gave me so many amazing opportunities in life. I have always been that parent that was involved in every aspect of my children's life and education. I'd love more to run for the board and for a seat on the Board of Education. There's not one specific reason I ever had for running for the board. There was every student within the district. I believe there's 3,604 right now. I truly believe every student matters in the district. And education opens up endless opportunities in children's lives. My vision of what makes a board member an exceptional board member is their ability to put their personal and political views aside when making decisions. Our country today is very politically divided, and as a board member, people should not be able to tell where you stand politically. There is only one office on the ballot November 2nd without a political identifier to it, and that's the Board of Education. In closing, we are charged with ensuring that every student maximizes their individual educational experiences.
Thank you, Mr. Sarno. Sorry to cut you.
No, that's quite all right. Didn't read fast enough.
Okay. Ms. Tarnaski.
All right, I just want to say thank you so much, Stephanie, tap into the students who are here, who facilitated some of our questions, to the staff who supported the students in that venture, to the audience who came. Dr. Latwis is in the audience. I also see the current board president sitting in the audience, as well as everyone listening at home. You know, I, of course, I'm up here because I want to make change for our children. That's what's first and foremost. I want them to have the greatest future possible and have all roads lead towards that future. No child should be left behind, and I don't mean that in a sense of, you know, the actual law. I mean that more of a child who isn't performing academically the way their peers are shouldn't be left in the dust. They need to, we need to implement workshops for parents. We need to implement workshops for teachers, personal development workshops. These teachers had a great opportunity to collaborate. Most of them have fallback plans for when their student is suffering in certain subjects. And they pull out packets from previous curriculums and lump them together to create something that works. And if we can get together with those teachers and find out all the different things that they use that works, we might be able to put something together to make sure these students who are suffering, who the curriculum isn't supporting, isn't being left behind. Politics has no place on the board. Everyone here agrees with that. And change is a collaboration. We're here to meld off each other and mold off of each other.
I'm sorry, Ms. Tarnaski, I have to cut you short. I do want to conclude with one thing. Because I've moderated this, I took advantage of a very nice situation. The students are going to write the article about everything that happened here today from their perspective.